I'm here.
Dr. Connors.
Present.
Mr. King. Dr. Nelson.
Here.
Mr. Patel.
Here.
Ms. Rivers.
Here.
Ms. Salgado-Cowen. Ms. Smith.
Here.
Stafford.
Here.
To the quorum.
Thank you. Hereby being known that the Piscataway Township Board of Education has complied with the notification requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act for the announcement of this meeting date and place on April the fourth, twenty twenty five in the following manner: Posting of this public notice on the posting board for the Board of Education in the Administration Building, email notification to newspapers, servant Piscataway, the Home News Tribune, and the Courier-News. Email notification filed with the municipal clerk at the Municipal Building on Hose Lane. This meeting is being videotaped. This recording is not an official record or supplement to the minutes. It is intended only as a source of information that the public might utilize later at a later date and time to familiarize themselves with Board activities. Executive session: Be it resolved that the Board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of review and discussion of personnel agenda, litigation, HIV monthly report, and other matters pursuant to NJSA ten semicolon four dash twelve B. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Grand executive session. Now the rest I'll slow up for Mr. Rood. That part was supposed to talk.
Come a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now back in public session. Okay, we're gonna jump down, skip to Malo and go to the president's report. All in that fashion. The president report for July tenth, twenty twenty five. Congratulations to the class of twenty twenty five. It was wonderful to watch all of our graduates be rewarded for their hard work, talent, resilience, as Piscataway High School grads graduated over five hundred and fifty seniors in a joyous ceremony at Jersey Mike's Arena. Congratulations to all the parents, family and friends who celebrated this great achievement alongside their children. And to the teachers and staff who guided and encouraged them. Congratulations also to all our students on their promotions in twenty twenty five, who will continue their education journeys in September. Best of luck to all of our students currently taking advancement advantage of the summer programs offered through our Office of Community Education. The Jump Ahead Academic Assistance Enrichment Program combines digital and direct instructions to turn the summer months into valuable learning time. Our summer camp provides every child with a memorable trips and experiences and families with safe, secure environment for their children over the summer. Other summer sessions include SAT prep, robotics, coding, tennis, basketball, science, intro to theater and more. We're happy to be able to offer so many opportunities for our children a memorable summer. Everyone stay safe, enjoy your summer, and that concludes my president's report. Next we have the superintendent's report.
All right, good evening and thank you, Ms. Cherry, for your comments. Tonight I'd like to acknowledge also the graduation ceremony, the fifth grade move-up ceremony, the middle school graduations and the grade three move-up ceremonies. When you go to the ceremony like that, you see all aspects of the Piscataway community. You see how we've all, in our own way, contributed to the development of a child. And as a superintendent or a teacher, a principal, it's a very, very humbling experience to see that. So I would like to acknowledge all our faculty and staff for contributing to the children in our district on the highlight. The highlight was the high school graduation. Really, come on. It's fabulous. Really.
Not the bus?
No, the bus was good, but really. You know, it was, those kids, they looked beautiful, they presented themselves so well, they were focused, you know, everything was excellent. And just think for a minute, you were part of their story, all of you, so thank you. I have to acknowledge Ms. Ritchie. I left her off my acknowledgements at the last meeting. You don't need to know why, but Ms. Ritchie, if you hear this or someone tells you I acknowledged it with one of our little people, you did a really good job. You really did a good job. And Omar is doing well also. I called his mom about two weeks ago and I'm waiting to hear back from her, you know, and she's doing well. August fifth is the night out and our kids, they're still here. Don't think summer's quiet in Piscataway. They're everywhere, no matter where you go. And I have to commend Mr. Olivera because the projects are moving on track, you know, they're moving on track. And I have to commend the administrators because I know you think it's the summer, but I don't know about you, but I've never worked like I have in the last month. It's like, where am I, who am I, what am I doing? I'm going to have to have the board take up a collection for filler and my hair. Please don't record that. Personally, when I'm in my quiet moments, somebody in my family said to me, you know, Aunt so-and-so, how do you, how do you take care of so many kids in school? And I said, I'm not in it alone. I'm not in it alone. And I, I never thought of it like that, you know, you're not in it alone. And if you service the people that you service, the people in turn will service the children and together we'll be all right. But I want to tell you a Piscataway story. I went to one of your little local stores. I don't usually take a lunch, but I leave the building every day just to get air. And I came out of the store and a young man with the most beautiful hair I've ever seen, he held the door open for me. And I had tea in one hand and my wallet and keys in the other. And I said, oh, you made my day. I said, I don't have to worry about how to open the door. And then he looked at me and he said, well, I'm feeling good. He said, I'm a student at Rutgers. I said, good for you. Then he tells me, he said, my name is, and I couldn't pronounce it now, I really couldn't, and I told him my name. And he said, I just came from my counseling session. I said, good for you. I said, good for you. I don't know this child. I said, good for you. I said, you know, you go to counseling for one reason, to become a better you. We don't go to counseling for anything else. And then he, he looked at me and he said, have you ever gone to counseling? I said, well, I really shouldn't tell you this because, you know, but yes, I have because I want to be the best Johanna I can be. And sometimes my faith and my parents, you know, I needed more. I needed an expert. And he told me he's majoring in Rutgers to be a director. I said, I hate to tell you this, you're good enough to be an actor. He said, yeah, but there's more money in directing. So he's going to, he's in Rutgers to be a director. He's a graduate of South Brunswick High School. He was, he's a sophomore at Rutgers. So I said to him, his name began with an O. I said to him, boom, I said, we've been talking for about five minutes. I said, what
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now back in public session. Okay, we're gonna jump down, skip to Malo and go to the President's Report, all in that fashion. The President Report for July tenth, twenty twenty five, congratulations to the class of twenty twenty five. It was wonderful to watch all of our graduates be rewarded for their hard work, talent, resilience, as Piscataway High School grads graduated over five hundred and fifty seniors in a joyous ceremony at Jersey Mike's Arena. Congratulations to all the parents, family and friends who celebrated this great achievement alongside their children. And to the teachers and staff who guided and encouraged them, congratulations also to all our students on their promotions in twenty twenty five, who will continue their education journeys in September. Best of luck to all of our students currently taking advancement, advantage of the summer programs offered through our Office of Community Education. The Jump Ahead Academic Assistance Enrichment Program combines digital and direct instructions to turn the summer months into valuable learning time. Our summer camp provides every child with a memorable trips and experiences and families with safe, secure environment for their children over the summer. Other summer sessions include SAT prep, robotics, coding, tennis, basketball, science, intro to theater and more. We're happy to be able to offer so many opportunities for our children a memorable summer. Everyone stay safe, enjoy your summer, and that concludes my President's Report. Next we have the Superintendent's Report.
All right, good evening and thank you, Ms. Cherry, for your comments. Tonight I'd like to acknowledge also the graduation ceremony, the fifth grade move up ceremony, the middle school graduations, and the grade three move up ceremonies. When you go to the ceremony like that, you see all aspects of the Piscataway community. You see how we've all, in our own way, contributed to the development of a child. And as a superintendent or a teacher, a principal, it's a very, very humbling experience to see that. So I would like to acknowledge all our faculty and staff for contributing to the children in our district on the highlight. The highlight was the high school graduation, really, come on. It's fabulous. Really.
Not the bus?
No, the bus was good, but really.
We had jokes.
You know, it was, those kids, they looked beautiful, they presented themselves so well, they were focused. You know, everything was excellent. And just think for a minute, you were part of their story, all of you, so thank you. I have to acknowledge Ms. Ritchie. I left her off my acknowledgements at the last meeting. You don't need to know why, but Ms. Ritchie, if you hear this or someone tells you I acknowledged it with one of our little people, you did a really good job. You really did a good job. And Omar is doing well also. I called his mom about two weeks ago and I'm waiting to hear back from her, you know, and she's doing well. August fifth is the night out. And our kids, they're still here. Don't think summer's quiet in Piscataway. They're everywhere, no matter where you go. And I have to commend Mr. Olivera, because the projects are moving on track. You know, they're moving on track. And I have to commend the administrators, because I know you think it's the summer, but I don't know about you, but I've never worked like I have in the last month. It's like, where am I, who am I, what am I doing? I'm going to have to have the board take up a collection for filler and my hair. Please don't record that. Personally, when I'm in my quiet moments, somebody in my family said to me, you know, Aunt so-and-so, "How do you, how do you take care of so many kids in school?" And I said, "I'm not in it alone." "I'm not in it alone." And I, I never thought of it like that. You know, you're not in it alone. And if you service the people that you service, the people in turn will service the children. And together we'll be all right. But I want to tell you a Piscataway story. I went to one of your little local stores. I don't usually take a lunch, but I leave the building every day just to get air. And I came out of the store and a young man with the most beautiful hair I've ever seen, he held the door open for me. And I had tea in one hand and my wallet and keys in the other. And I said, "Oh, you made my day." I said, "I don't have to worry about how to open the door." And then he looked at me and he said, "Well, I'm feeling good." He said, "I'm a student at Rutgers." I said, "Good for you." Then he tells me, he said, "My name is," and I couldn't pronounce it now, I, I really couldn't. And I told him my name. And he said, "I just came from my counseling session." I said, "Good for you." I said, "Good for you." I don't know this child. I said, "Good for you." I said, "You know, you go to counseling for one reason, to become a better you. We don't go to counseling for anything else." And then he, he looked at me and he said, "Have you ever gone to counseling?" I said, "Well, I really shouldn't tell you this, because, you know, but yes, I have." Because I want to be the best Johanna I can be. And sometimes my faith and my parents, you know, I needed more. I needed an expert. And he told me he's majoring in Rutgers to be a director. I said, "I hate to tell you this, you're good enough to be an actor." He said, "Yeah, but there's more money in directing." So he's going to, he's in Rutgers to be a director. He's a graduate of South Brunswick High School. He was, he's a sophomore at Rutgers. So I said to him, his name began with an O. I said to him, "Boom." I said, "We've been talking for about five minutes." I said, "What did our conversation start with?" And I could tear up over it. He said, "Johanna, it started with kindness." That's right. There's your Piscataway story. There you go.
There it is.
There it is, right or wrong. But none of us have hair like this kid, Mr. Connors. None of us have hair like this child. Look at Mr. Rubin.
I'm not gonna adhere since the Nixon administration.
I really mean it, none of us do. And the other thing I love about Piscataway, I love it when I tell the people and I, when I hear it, because they're very intense, they're very, very serious, they get their work done, they get their job done. But I look at them and I go, "Guys, we're not doing surgery. Could we just have what?" What do I say to you?
A little fun?
A little fun.
A little, can we laugh a little bit? We're dealing with children, we're the humanities, you know? And I'm glad tonight we had a laugh over, you know, that. Before we end, summer in Piscataway, as Ms. Cherry said, is, is still very engaging. And I'd like us to just take a second to be, to acknowledge our neighbors in Plainfield with the declared emergency. We escaped it, one of our schools lost power. Nobody was injured. And I, also, in your thoughts, think of the families in Texas. You know, that, that, that was a tragedy. But when you come from a town where a young man says to somebody he doesn't know and you're talking, he says, "It starts with kindness," this town can get through anything. You're good people, so thank you.
Thank you, very kind words. Personnel and Labor Relations, Ms. Nancy Salgado-Cowen.
Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through R be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Rubin, can you take the roll call?
Dr. Connors, yes. Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Ms. Salgado-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Abstain, be one, yes to the rest. No committee reports, approval of minutes, Ms. Rivers?
Remember I was going to.
I thought you was doing that another time, my bad, time's, time's up.
All right, there were no committee reports, but as Chairman of Fiscal, I just wanted to share with everybody, we didn't, we didn't have a meeting, but what happened is that on May, on June thirtieth, the governor signed the state budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty six into law. And I just wanted to highlight what that meant for us in terms of, you know, K through twelve formula state aid. The, the budget includes some significant developments regarding the funding formula that reflects various advocacy priorities. First, the budget includes several tools that decrease the aid volatility and increase predictability. And so what they're doing is that they are keeping from last year that budget language. So the state will limit on a maximum of three percent decreases on those four main categories of category aid. And, but on the biggest piece, equalization aid, the, the budget again will be capped, year over year increases at six percent. In other words, as you recall from our budget presentation, that if this wasn't done, Piscataway, based on our, on our, on our figures in terms of the town's taxing authority versus what the state calculates for our local share contribution, was a gap, a bit, a huge gap. And what that meant is that if they would have run the formula without this three percent ma, decrease or six percent maximum increase, we would have lost thirteen and a half million dollars of our twenty seven million dollars in state aid. Instead, it was three percent of the twenty seven, which is about the eight hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars that we're talking about. So, so the good news is that in this budget approved by the governor on June thirtieth, that includes K through twelve formula state aid, that is what's going to happen again next year through budget language rather than the traditional legislation. And so I just wanted to report that to people, because that helps us plan for next year.
Correct.
As opposed to last year.
Preparation, right.
Good.
Thank you so much for that information, Dr. Connors, keeping it transparent and keeping the public notified of what has taken place already and what's in the record books for the state. Thank you again. Approval of minutes, Ms. Rivers?
Being resolved that the following minutes be approved as submitted, the special meeting on June second, twenty twenty five, and executive session during twen, June second, twenty twenty five.
Is it a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Madam Chairman, though, I, I, I had a question for the Board Secretary, the Board Attorney.
Don't be, don't, don't be giving my Board Secretary.
No, no, what happened is that there's a whole list here of meetings.
Right, special meetings, right.
There's a lot of special meetings, but if you look at the minutes of the special meeting, the special meeting is about the superintendent search and our board president was conflicted. But it says on the minute, on the minutes that she was just absent. So my question is, for the record, is it okay for her to be listed in these, all of these special meetings, just being absent versus being conflicted?
It's okay to say she was absent.
Okay, that was my question.
Good.
I have a question, are we going to?
We have to do them one by one.
Okay.
That's my question.
No, one by one, they have to go officially and record one by one.
All right, so we were on that first team.
Yeah.
So Nancy made the motion, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, special meeting, June third, twenty twenty five, executive session, June third, twenty twenty five.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, sorry.
Motion passes.
Special meeting, June fourth, twenty twenty five, executive session.
Motion.
June fourth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Special meeting, June ninth, twenty twenty five, executive session, June ninth, twenty twenty five.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Yep.
Okay, business meeting.
Hold on.
Oh, we're still recording. Are we still recording?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
So we're on June twelfth, is that what?
Yeah, we're going to business meeting now.
Okay.
June.
June twelfth.
Yeah, business meeting, June twelfth, twenty twenty five, executive session, June twelfth, twenty twenty five.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Special meeting, June sixteenth, twenty twenty five, executive session, June sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
Motion.
Second.
Second, everybody. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Special meeting, June seventeenth, twenty twenty five, executive session.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Special meeting, June twenty fifth, executive session, June twenty fifth.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Public comments from the floor. Anybody gonna be speaking from the public comments before I read this? Okay, with that in mind, can I have a motion to open public comments?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Public comments, it's open, can I have a motion to close public comments?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Public comments, it's closed, fiscal?
That was Nancy for motion, Brenda for second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Disco Flan Operations, Dr. Connors.
Be resolved, following motions identified as items A through L be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Secretary, can you take the roll?
I just seconded it.
Oh, okay. Okay, Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel? Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Salgado-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Curriculum, Mr. Patel, your turn now.
That was your turn.
Be resolved that following motions identified as item A and B be approved as presented.
No, 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 not your turn to do that. Your turn to say yes.
No, 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 no.
It is his turn.
No, it's his turn.
No, but what about Brenda?
There's nothing there.
Oh, okay, fine, that's where we're hung up on, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Patel read his part, A and B, can I, second, Mr. Secretary.
Second.
Can you take the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Salgado-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Pupil Services, Dr. Nelson?
Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A and B be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Secretary, can you take the roll?
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Salgado-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Administrative and Auxiliary, Ms. Strackford?
Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through C be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Secretary, can you take the roll?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Salgado-Cowen?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All business, anybody with all business?
I have all business. I just wanted to report to the board, as well as the community, that we are concluding the search process for our new superintendent. All the interviews have been done and we are proceeding to the next step.
Thank you for that updated information, so that public stays informed about the superintendent search and where you are in it. Thank you board members for all of your commitment and hard work you put in.
Additionally, all those special meetings, as Dr. Connors had mentioned, involved eight of the nine board members coming on all of those nights. So I do also want to acknowledge my fellow board members who were able to assist during the numerous events over the month of June. They, we really worked hard and we worked together as a team very well, and I appreciate every single one of you. Thank you.
Dr. Connors?
Well, on the superintendent search, thank you Nancy for stepping up and really doing a stellar job on leading us to that point in all of those special meetings. I just want to remind people that we still will be working on our New Jersey School Board Association Master Board Certification. We are in need of five and a half credits. And we, and that's five and a half hours of, of training, and so we'll be scheduling that. The good news is we don't have to be finished until a year from November. So, but we, we, you know, it's just imperative that we, that we keep going on learning how to do good governance and as a board. So you'll be hearing from me, I'll be the, doing that, and try and get something going in the fall. And we'll pick a couple topics and we'll move right along. That was my all business.
Thank you, Dr. Connors. And Dr. Roberto would like to say a few words.
I just want to thank our three videographers in the back, stand there. You make us look so good. You really do. Is this the field you would like to go into?
I'm not.
This is it.
Right.
Really.
We got two no's and a, that's a good one.
That's fair.
But we do appreciate your services and thank you for your talent.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
John, could, John, could I impose upon you to ask Robert to come in just for a minute? Robert, we'd like to publicly acknowledge your service to the district.
Thank you.
Shot a light on him.
Robert, come in so the video can see you. Move into the room.
I'm okay, I'm okay.
You, you represent the people in our entire district that keep us safe. And we do value and appreciate you.
He's polite.
And standing next to Robert is John Bastrom, did I say it correctly?
No. Ball trough.
Ball trough.
Ball trough.
Just call him John B.
John B. You keep us in communication, you keep our equipment and systems in place. And thank you very much for your good work. Thank you. And Mr. Tomah, you also, you're a kind gentleman to work with. And now tomorrow, no reflection on Mr. Tomah or anything tomorrow, let's get back to work. Oh, we're closed.
Monday.
Monday, let's get back to work, you know? Thank you, Madam President.
Anybody with new business?
New business?
And Madam President?
This time it's Tom.
Tom first.
Madam President, we touched upon this topic earlier, and that is about how, as a board, and we're here as members, and hopefully like for a three-year term or whatever, is that we begin to gain institutional knowledge. And along those lines, that I would challenge everyone to go back to this time last year and see all of the things that we as a board do in September, in October, November, et cetera. And the reason I say that is because we're at a point in that calendar where I'm going to recommend that we, that we meet with the superintendent, is that the beginning of school in September will, will be upon us before long.
Oh.
It'll be tomorrow. The thing is that as a board, what we never formalize, that we talk amongst ourselves, is what will be the message the board wants to give to the public on back-to-school nights. And then what we end up doing is coming up to the script, the talking points, because it's our opportunity as school liaisons to all get out at the same time during that month to deliver the same message to, to the school community. So I would just say, one, we have a wealth of institutional knowledge. We're at a point in that calendar where we would need to put together the back-to-school nights, talking points, and think about them. And this is our opportunity.
Thank you, Tom. In that same vein, Madam President, I would like to put in some sort of group that perhaps we can think about having a, a leadership summit just for us board members.
Definitely.
Where we would, you know, a retreat of sorts. It doesn't necessarily have to be overnight or anything. But where we would come together as our full board and gain some, you know, of that knowledge and maybe put it together in a manual or some kind of document that's living, breathing, that we can update as we go along, so that this way when there are new board members, they have that to reflect on. And then they also don't have to just rely on all of our memories as a fifty-one-year-old I may not always remember. So that's my first point. I think that the best time I went, I did attend a leadership conference for vice presidents through the New Jersey School Boards recently. And many of the school boards have this summit, retreat, whatever you want to call it, in the month of June, I believe, so that this way they can do their board self-evaluation on time for the following year. And they reflect upon that once the close of the school year. So before July first, somewhere between like, you know, May and June, and I would be more than willing to chair that committee in order to speak with the board members and figure out, especially with the fact that we're going to be getting a new superintendent, I think it's vitally important that we all stay informed and cohesive and try to include our, our new superintendent into what we're doing in the future. So that's my suggestion for new business, and I will follow it up with your approval.
You have approval.
Okay.
Looking forward to you, well, let's, let me say this. What we're getting ready to embark on is a new beginning, but something that should have already been existent, but it's, we're not going to would've, could've, should've, we're just going to do it now. With that in mind, a small committee get together. I don't know who wants to be the other two volunteers, that we sit down and we come up with the talking points for back-to-school night. Therefore, the administration doesn't have to worry about it, because we, the board is collectively are the ones who are speaking. We are the one talking to the families in the audience, so therefore all the verbiage and information should be coming from us. Don't everybody raise your hand at once, but just let me know. Hey, got you, okay.
But Tom was already there, right?
Well, well, Tom is always in the talking point. That's my encyclopedia over there.
I'm a newbie.
Okay, so we're going to do two newbies over here and.
We should do it collectively.
We could do it collectively, but then we have to put a meeting together, being we're all going to be together.
We want it less than five people, I think.
We want less than five?
Oh, yeah, that's true.
But here's what you can do, we can send it through an email, what your talking points you want to be to me, and then I can collaboratively put them all together, send it back to you. That way we don't have to worry about a forum. And we'll get the job done that way, and nobody has to leave their home. Easy peasy. And that way, these three, these two and me, we'll make it happen.
Well, you know, I, on that, as the sort of board historian and with a lot of institutional knowledge.
I said encyclopedia, I didn't say historian.
Historian, encyclopedia, whatever it may be, is that if you look at the.
Wait, I was still on my turn.
No, we're coming back.
No, if we look at the leadership of what Nancy's talking about, is this, this is a practice that we've had in the past that we've gotten away from.
Exactly.
And, and what it is.